I have a thumbs up because we are Facebook Live for our work session in preparation for the first meeting in March, which will be Tuesday, March the 4th. So we'll kind of call work session to order. We have a couple of presentations today from...
He's walking.
Okay. There we go. Do we have someone? There we go. How are you, sir?
Doing well.
Come down to the end of the table. We are Facebook Live, so y'all are...whatever y'all are doing is being watched right now. You come on down. These gentlemen are from Ingram Equipment Company. I'll let y'all just introduce yourselves, since I only have one name, which is Eric Smith. And this is...Mr. Smiley had said that y'all would be able to share some information with us about new sanitation trucks and lease purchase options and those sorts of things. And so that's kind of why you're here, is we're looking forward to how we're going to handle our sanitation and our equipment and that sort of thing over the coming year or years. So I will let y'all have authority. If you would be so kind as to introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Starting off, I'm Eric Smith. As you know, with Ingram Equipment, I'm the Regional Sales Manager with Ingram Equipment. Been with the company about nine years, and it's been a great experience. And I love garbage and I love trash.
And we love it too when it's not on our doorstep.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, I brought two gentlemen with me. Jeff Martin is the President, owner of Ingram Equipment. And we have Keith Johnson, who is the General Manager as well.
All right. Thank you. Do you have a presentation of some kind you want to make?
You know, I brought some data, if you will, that is more just a support material on...because I think the subject was, you're talking about the value of rotating your fleet.
Right, funding options and yes.
Yes. And what we're handing out here is basically just some industry information that, you know, all the trucking industries put together every year and have done for decades. And basically, the message that you're going to see there is there is a transition in the life of a heavy duty truck. And that's what we're dealing with. And it is in that fourth, fifth, and sixth years where you go from a truck that is extremely reliable and predictable in terms of maintenance costs and upkeep, to a truck that in its fifth, sixth, and then beyond that, becomes a truck that is more costly than if you were making a monthly payment on it.
And is that true of the trucks as well as the rear loading trucks? Same history of lifespan?
And what you're looking at there is data that really is not just garbage trucks, but just heavy trucks, meaning, you know, CDL requirement, you know, over the road tandem axle type trucks. And I would argue that garbage is even more difficult application. When you are putting the payloads that these types of trucks are carrying, and you stop and start, you know, every hundred feet, the wear and tear, I would say, is worse than your typical heavy duty truck. And so, you know, this data that we provided covers the whole industry. So, you know, if anything, I would say you would almost accelerate these timeframes. But anyway, what that shows is, again, in years four, five, and six, you start to see that curve, the maintenance curve really ramp up. And, you know, we look at that intersection of annual maintenance costs versus what a monthly payment would be. And so I believe it's on the last page, I just threw a couple of examples out there on, you know, what a rear loader...on the left, I believe I put a rear loader, and that's the number that, you know, on the purchase price of the truck that we just sold to you, you know, what that monthly payment would be. And I believe it's somewhere around $5,000. If you were running side loaders, it would be around $7,000 a month. So if you look at that graph, you see maintenance costs start to exceed those numbers in about year four to five. And that's where we recommend that you get inside that five-year number.
Smiley, don't hide over there. Come on. There you are. Come over here and sit. Because I want to ask you some questions. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. And so there's a couple of things at play there. One, you know, again, we want to stay ahead of that intersection where we're in trucks that are reliable, because not only do you start having maintenance costs, but probably, and I think Chris had probably attested us the most, you know, costs are one thing, but downtime is the other...that's the killer. Having that truck not on route picking up garbage. It puts a heavier load on the other trucks and the other team members. And so it's, you know, again, it's not just the cost, which is all we kind of think about in this handout, but downtime. The downtime just continues to increase as the age of that truck. So again, we're trying to stay in front of that intersection. And then, in addition to that, we are still at a timeframe where you, as a municipality, do not have to pay FET. And so from a pricing standpoint, if you're turning in a truck at a three- or four-year mark, that is an extremely valuable piece of equipment to the regional private haulers across the country. Because you didn't have to pay FET, you're not looking for that money on the trade-in either, because you never paid it in the first place. So it's a used truck that the private haulers, they don't have to pay FET once it becomes a used truck. So if it's three or four, only three or four years old, you know, hopefully we sold it, and I think we did on these, with a five-year warranty. So, and that chassis warranty is transferable to the next buyer. So again, with it being a used truck, a hauler doesn't have to pay FET on it, it still has some chassis warranty left on it. So the trade-in value is very strong in those three, four years. Once you get beyond five, you really see the secondary market value drop.
Okay. Just FET is federal excise tax, which is 12% of the transaction.
12%, okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's a big number. I mean, it's, you know, on a frontload garbage truck, for instance, a private hauler, FET is a $50,000 line item all by itself.
Well, Chris, one of the reasons I wanted you to be up here is because I want you to remind forward all of us of what the ages are that you have and what your equipment is.
Okay. Currently on the rear loader side, I have a two, 2019, a 2014, a 2023, a 2024. On the commercial side, on the front loads, I have a 2014, a 2019, a 2020.
Okay. So the 14 is well beyond the years that we're talking about. And the 19 is actually a year beyond the years we're talking about, right?
It's kind of right at that mark where you're about to go downhill on the repair side.
So your one new commercial or front loader, not front loader, yeah, front loader, is the newest one?
Yes, that's the 2020.
Yeah. Okay. I just, you know, want to kind of set the expectation of what we possibly need to be looking at as we're moving forward if we want to do much of what they're talking about in terms of keeping our equipment running and not in the shop and, you know, operational and, you know, so.
Are you familiar with this group that when we go to meet one of Confluent Jackson, we always have somebody doing a presentation about the same thing? Are y'all familiar with the same group as well?
I don't think that's one. That's a mid...is that Truck Works?
Right, I think that's what it is.
Yeah. We partner with...
I think that's what it is.
We partner with a number of different chassis manufacturers and Truck Works, who they sell the Kenworth chassis, they're one of them. So we're very familiar with them, we have an excellent relationship with them. And they're one of the big chassis guys that actually preach the same thing that we do in terms of the buyback option, and I know they speak on it every time they get an opportunity to.
Yeah, they're big into that, on the garbage, not the garbage truck, but the dump truck side of things.
I know a lot of municipalities switched over to the, because of the problem that they, we just want to change over, that you can change once they go to getting older. I know the last three times we went to Mid-Warland Conference, we always had somebody doing a presentation all the way to the Capitol, and the same thing.
Right. Similar concept.
Okay. And Alderman wrote that question.
On the maintenance costs, like for heavy-duty trucks, just spits off three years, $12,000, is that mostly oil, hydraulic tools? What is, what makes up maintenance during that?
Yeah, it's a great question, and it's all of those things, absolutely. It's brakes, it's tires, it's, you're going to have that no matter what, but, you know, from a garbage truck, it becomes hydraulic hoses, pumps, cylinders, all the hydraulic components. You know, structurally speaking, you know, the high garbage body is very well-built, and you can continue relatively expensively to keep that part up. It is, it's really more about the hydraulics and the cylinders and the pumps that are very expensive. And once they kind of leak and blow out, you know, you can have them rebuilt, not quite as good as a brand-new one, so it's kind of like putting a Band-Aid on it. But yeah, it's, the hydraulic components really start to add up.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
So looking at these lease rates here?
Yes.
I was just trying to back into how you got that amount. You got the lease amount, I guess you'd say a tax on top of that?
This is taxing, I assumed you all are tax-exempt, so I didn't have to ...
I think we are.
I was just trying, I was trying to get into how ...
Yeah, so there's a purchase price number that I put in, and some of it certainly wrapped just around number, but it's pretty very close. There's, in this case, I did a three-year rotation.
Five percent?
At five and a half percent, which, I actually got some hard numbers this morning from Cadence, who I know is a big player in the municipal market, and the rate was actually a little lower, it was more like five percent for a municipal, so.
And you take off that residual?
And then, and then we set, so this is set up for a balloon payment of, you know, in the rear loader case, within $130,000, right? So that's the way the financing is set up. It's three-year or 36 months, you can make payments in arrears, you know, a full year after the fact. And then, after the third year, that balloon payment of 130, that's an estimate that Ingram Equipment says this is a good number, you know, to trade in at that time.
Right.
And, you know, if that's a program you want to get engaged in, then we can even make that payment, and then we would just come take the truck and do it all over again.
I got you. Okay, that's kind of what I wanted to say. Again, I was trying to get to your payment amount.
Yeah, it's figuring the balloon payment, equal to that residual.
Okay.
Did I see your name?
Yeah, I'd like to be last, if at all possible.
Oh, okay.
I saw Alderman Moreland's.
Okay, y'all ready, because I've got a lot of questions. No, not really. So Chris, you've got three commercial trucks, and technically you only need two. The reason we have three is because the condition of the trucks, correct?
That's correct.
Residential, you only need four, but we have six, and that's because of the shape and the condition of residential trucks, correct?
Yes.
I was just thinking about the insurance, the maintenance on the three extra trucks that we have to have for backup in case they go down on that side of it. And then you've got the purchase outright versus the lease price. Like, if we were to purchase them outright, we've got the maintenance plan and all of that. If we do the lease buyback program, we have to sell it back to y'all, correct? Or y'all buy back?
No, not to me.
We can do it on the open market for the best price.
You can do, all we're saying is, you know, we believe it's, yes, we're willing to give you a trade value, you know, for that number. You might decide, you know what, this is the greatest truck we've ever seen, we're just going to refinance the balloon and keep going. But you have all of those options in front of you, you're not committed to us to, on the trade value.
Okay.
We're just saying, hey, this is one option.
Yeah, you really have three options to choose from, whether you keep it yourself, like you mentioned, or whether you utilize the buyback option, or you can sell it yourself in the market.
Yeah. And certainly, what we're offering is a wholesale-type number. You know, you might be able to take it to auction and get more of a retail number, because you'll have access to actual users. You know, we're going to take it, and of course, we want to make money on it, you know, so we'll put some money into it and remarket it and sell it.
Okay, so the last truck that we purchased, we got the maintenance plan, where y'all come every 90 days and do that. It's a long list that y'all go over, every bit of that truck.
Right.
I guess, what is the value at the end of the three or the five-year, when y'all do that maintenance plan? How much of an increase do you see when you sell it back? When y'all lay eyes on it every 90 days?
Yeah, certainly, we, it increases our trade number, you know, in terms of the value that I think it's going to be worth in three years, knowing that we have laid eyes on it every 90 days and pointed out, hey, there's some things that we need to do a little different in between those visits, you know, from your team. So absolutely, I'm willing to give a larger trade value when I know that, you know, our guys have laid eyes on it every 90 days.
Okay, I think that's all.
I have a curiosity question. Y'all deal in several different types of equipment, right? As in brands, like a Heil or Kenworth or whatever. So is there one that rises to the top? Just curiosity.
Well, you know, we're just a Heil garbage truck, you know.
Oh, are you? All right, okay.
We're just the body guys.
Okay.
So the chassis, you know, preference is completely up to you.
Okay.
And what I would, what I would say there is, you know, almost all of them use Cummins engines and Allison transmissions and Meritor axles, very similar components. It is really, who do you trust from a dealer's standpoint? Because it's a brand. Who do you trust to get that truck up and running the quickest?
Okay.
That's, that would be my suggestion on the chassis.
Chris, do you have anything you want to mention or add?
I don't at the moment.
Okay. You're up.
So, I'd like to put a bow on it and say that for us as aldermen, one of the things that we probably need to adjust our thinking about is less that we are buying an asset, as we need to recognize how much it costs us to operate, what is the operating expense for having a truck? And whether we do it as a lease or as an outright purchase, there's an expense to having that. And so, that's, I think, the bottom line for us as aldermen, is how much is the expense? And what you said about downtime, and I know that it's difficult for Chris to get repairs done quickly sometimes, that all impacts other operational expenses. And so, as somebody who likes to look at the numbers and that sort of thing, to me, this is much like our police car leases that we've entered into. It just recognizes that there's a cost to having a truck, and this is how we wish to do it, or that's how we wish to do it, so.
Well, I would like to say, just from my perspective, I would like us to have that newer fleet, so that we're not constantly having to pull something out of mothballs, if you will, to use it and have it, you know, just create issues for us as we go along. It's nice to have something that's working regularly and reliably.
And the other thing is, it gets baked into the budget. So we know every year, we're going to have to spend, spend these real dollars every year, as opposed to knowing that every other year or every two years, we're going to have to come up with $300,000 to $500,000 to buy a truck. So this is much more predictable from a budgeting perspective.
And that's exactly the point, is, you know, that first three or four years, your costs are very predictable. You know, it's a truck that is new, it's under warranty, both body and chassis, so, you know, manufacturer failures are covered, you know, it's the wrecks or, you know, things that.
Something caught on fire. Yes. Twenty-four trucks.
So it is, to your point, it is all about being, having a very predictable monthly number to deal with. Because once you get beyond that fifth year, it becomes very unpredictable.
Well, we need to figure out how we want to plan to do this, if this is the board's desire.
That's right.
So I would like to see us, get together with Webb and Lisa and see if we can't come up with a plan to get in a rotation that allows us to do that. Let's see what it's going to cost us to get there.
And the overall expense will go down if we can figure out how to make the money work.
We just got to get there.
And the, yeah, the long-term, the expense will go.
It's that transition.
And not having three extra trucks.
We may be able to sell some things.
And I know Brian Eric has mentioned this, we've had these discussions a lot, and we have a lot of examples that if there, we put a good municipality and a customer in this rotation, you get to a point where you'd like to talk to some of these people, we're happy to make those.
Well, I would like you to be a resource for, for the, for the final plan. So, and I don't know what municipality you're talking about, I'm assuming there's some Mississippi municipalities we can pull from?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, that'd be great. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming to our work session.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You got a lot of small municipalities that are going to this, so, sure, I'm sure.
It's easier to find.
All right, thank you, Neil. We appreciate you taking the time on a Friday. Go down the street, have lunch.
I heard a little bit of a pretty problem.
Okay, there you go. There you go. All right, and then next we have Mr. Keel Buck, who's going to give us, we've been working through various and sundry ways to get information out to the community on what's going on with rates. And so he is, he's here to give the board a presentation, and he made a presentation this week to a group of folks at Needmore Center. So we had a, had a nice group, I think you ended up with, what, like 25 to 30 folks there? So we're helping, helping them see how the Smart Hub works and what's going on and how those things are determined, so.
Right.
Edward, it's all your.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the board giving me the quick opportunity to talk about, really, the theme we're hearing a lot from, and I know you guys are too, is high bills. And I'll talk a little bit about the reasons for the high bills, and then also some strategies that we're trying to educate some of our customers about. I know you guys are on the front lines, you're seeing people at the grocery store, getting calls, texts, seeing the chatter on social media. And I wanted to recognize two of my folks who are on the front lines, hearing, receiving those calls, emails from our customers, Samantha Goza, our Business Services Manager, and then Sabrina Phipps. We are, we have all hands on deck, we're really trying to focus on this and trying to help kind of through this transitional peak period that we're experiencing right now. So today's just a high-level view of some of those things that we're communicating to customers, just so you're aware of it. And please, if you have folks that have questions or want to learn more about some of the things I'm going to talk about today, send them my way. We're happy to set up individual one-on-one appointments, talk to them on the phone. Like the mayor said, happy to go talk to groups, church groups, you know, different organizations. I felt like it was a really good conversation this week, Alderman Sisdrum and Moreland were there as well for part of it. So I'll talk to you real quick. These are some of the topics I wanted to talk about.
Before you get into there, I want to pose a question that just came across.
Yes, Mayor.
So why do we have a 34-day cycle this time? What creates the cycle?
Right, it depends on the length of the month, and that can vary, depending on how long or short, and then when that, when the billing process actually runs.
Okay, so we recently had a 34, that was, that was the question.
Right.
A 34-day cycle.
During a very cold period.
During a 12-period.
Right, exactly. And so that does, that does increase the usage during that, and certainly something we're trying to educate the customers to look at, because that could be one of the reasons why the bill is so high.
Does cycles will run from 28 to 34 days usually?
Generally, yes. Unless, and the only caveat is typically if, like, it's a new customer.
Right.
And you may have called, gotten in the middle of a cycle, so I've seen some bills that are in the 40 range, and that's usually the indicator for that. So these are just some topics, again, conversation, if y'all have any other topics, I'd love to talk about it. The mayor has offered us, me, to allow to go into her Smart Hub account and do a deep dive, if y'all want to do that at the end, and happy to show you just some of those tools that everybody has, if you're a strong utilities customer, access to do it either on a computer, iPad, or smartphone. So why are my bills so high? And that's the, that's the question a lot of people are asking right now. If you look at your bill, what you see is there's usage graphs, but they're only by month. So you look back and you can see a stair step of that, and it's over a 12-month period. And so people initially, when they see that spike that went up, they say, well, something's wrong with my meter. That's initially kind of the prompt. And a lot of times, just to, just to indicate, the majority of people's utility bills is electric service, as y'all can imagine. And so when I, when I say the weather, weather is the primary influencer of the utility bills, especially the electric side. But when you take a little deeper dive, using some of the tools that are available, this is what a daily graph will look like, and it actually has a usage amount per day. The blue line that kind of goes up and down, looks like a mountain peak and range there, is the low temperature during that time period. And you can adjust whatever time range you want to with this data. You can say this is from beginning of December through last week. And the main thing I wanted to point out here is, there is a definite correlation, I can't, this laser pointer doesn't show up on the, on the TV screen, but there's a definite correlation between when these temperatures go way down and the usage corresponding that goes way up. Likewise, the corollary of those, when the temperature goes back up to a normal or a seasonal, seasonally warm temperature for December or January, the usage goes way down. And so what we're trying to do is educate the customers and help them, when they receive that bill, they can kind of go and understand what that usage looks like. I'll give you an example. I went and looked at some of my usage during the Christmas holidays, and I can definitely see a change when my kids get out of school, and they're at home all day, and they're running water, and they're using, you know, a lot more electricity than you can, than normal and throughout the Christmas holidays. That is something that I can actually see when I get to this granular level of analysis, but it's not something you can see on your normal bill, because it just shows the total monthly usage. So again, a couple of really cold days that we had in January, January 22nd, which is that kind of in the middle of the graph there, the higher peak. And then we also had some really cold weather last week, which is near the end of February, which unfortunately, this means the conversation we're having is going to extend into March, when people are receiving those bills. And so that is the challenge, is a beautiful day like today, it's warm, it's sunny, they receive a bill in their mail, in the mail, and it's, you know, a good bit higher than what they're used to. And they're saying, there's no way I use this much, you know, look at this temperature. But it's actually from a month ago, and, because we bill a month behind. So again, trying to educate the customers on what that looks like. We do offer a good number of payment, yes, Mayor?
Can I stop you?
Yes, sure.
And one of the things that was mentioned at the workshop that I attended that just gobsmacked me, was how much it costs to operate a space heater. Can you talk about that and how, how that can really drive a number of, if you're running a space?
Yes, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, space heaters, and we talked a little bit about this, they are a very accessible form of heat. You can get them in pretty much any hardware store, Walmart, you know, relatively inexpensive. But those space heaters are generally around 2,000 watts, if you turn them all the way up. Some are higher and lower, depending on which brand and model you get. But generally speaking, electricity is going to cost you round numbers, it fluctuates just a little bit each month based on fuel costs from TBA. But generally speaking, it's going to be about a dime per kilowatt hour, okay? So if you do the math, a 2,000-watt space heater, and it's a 10 cents per kilowatt hour, kilowatt would be 1,000 watts per, over a given hour, that's about $2 an hour if you're running that space heater wide open. And that's just for one. And you know, we, we hear from customers whose HVAC system is not working, like they're renting and their landlord won't fix the unit. So that is their only alternative, is to go and get space heaters and put one in each room. So if you have five space heaters in your house during these really cold days, it's probably not even keeping you, your house that warm, but it's all that you can do, that's about $10 an hour. And you do that for a full day's period, that can add up really, really quickly. So we did talk about space heaters, and I want to encourage, those are the types of conversations that we like to have with customers during these energy workshops. And I'll talk a little bit more about those, but thank you for that prompt to talk about that specifically, because space heaters are a very, very common source of heat, but unfortunately, a very inefficient source. unfortunately, a very inefficient source of heat when it comes to cost. So, these are some of the payment options that we try to make sure our customers are aware of and that are available, they're posted on our website. The main one here that I'd like to highlight that we're going to release, we have been promoting and we will continue to promote is this budget billing. That is a set amount that will be the same every single one. And then what it does is it takes out some of these peaks and valleys. You look at a twelve-month worth of usage, it calculates that average, and you pay that same amount for six months. After that six months, it's going to recalculate based on the usage that you just did, it's going to notify the customer a month ahead of what that new total would be. It can go up or down depending on what that particular customer's been doing. And it's something that you can kind of plan on for, for a six-month period. And we really think that that's a beneficial tool, because what we've seen is people that are normally paying, you know, a hundred dollars, a couple hundred dollars, they're seeing a four hundred dollar bill. And that is just really dramatic and very hard for people, especially those on a budget or fixed income. So, we're really pushing and promoting that. We do allow extensions for people that have a higher bill, gives them two additional weeks to pay that from their due date before getting disconnected. We have, we are happy to walk through all the customers. We have a lot of partnerships with Prairie Opportunity, Helping Hands, you know, the, the board recently approved or talked about the Helping Hands and the Roundup funding going toward Helping Hands that's going to help community members who are struggling with their utility bills. And then the last one is some, some people receive.
Edward, before you leave the, the budget billing or levelized bills.
Yes.
That six-month period, is there a catch-up, or are you just catch-up using the next level?
It recalculates.
Okay, so, so if you paid under, then it's going to.
Isn't that right? So, do you do a, do you do a true-up at the end of that?
So, when it recalculates, that's your true-up period as well.
Okay.
So, when you recalculate, you pay the full AR balance, and then same with the next six months.
So, you do pay the full balance.
So, you do, you do add that.
So, that's not leveled.
Recount.
So, there is, there is a true-up at that six-month.
All right, so, the next one isn't a calculated level, calculated to add the true-up part in it, it is calculated at the next.
So, it can be an addition.
So, like true-up recount.
It can be an addition or a credit too.
Okay.
If you're using less usage, and that credit would, would roll forward.
So, you're saying, don't change your behavior because your bills are leveled, it's going to catch up with you at some point?
At some point, yes.
Yeah.
And then pick your due date, you know, for people who receive their income on a certain day of the month, and they want their utility bill to correspond to that, we allow that.
One, one thing on that though, on the due date, for, if they want to pick that, they do have to have a checking account set up on automatic draft?
Yes.
That's not the only way for that to work?
That's indicated there. So, we're trying really hard to let people know some of the notifications that are available through Smart Hub. All of this is, the tools we're going to talk about today are all through our customer portal, which is Smart Hub. And the first one we really are trying to encourage people to sign up for is the bill is available. As soon as that bill is printed and it leaves the printing warehouse, it hits the postal service mail, you will be notified either via text or email or both that that bill is available. And that's an example right there on the right of what that type of message it'll say. It'll say your account, location, it'll tell you the amount, it'll tell you your due date. If you're on draft, it'll indicate that too. This is something that we really are encouraging folks, because the mail is out of our control. We get a lot of complaints about the bill, I just got my bill yesterday and it's due tomorrow, that type of thing. We can't control the mail, but this is something that we can control, and we can get those bills out with plenty of time for people to make those decisions. Same thing with the link notice, if people forget to pay their bills, it'll send an automated message through this, through these same platforms or venues. And then also, two days before, two business days before our disconnect time, we are now sending out automated phone calls to customers who we have that contact information and who are signed up for Smart Hub. So, again, just a, just a reminder to try to help people and prevent that disconnect and lack of service.
What percentage of your people are, are signed up?
That's a good question. How many would you think?
The number has grown each month as far as Smart Hub and PayPal, we're still probably around maybe ten, fifteen percent. But it's grown every, we really promoted it after we went live, but encourage everybody to use it. But it's grown every month, but not where we want it to be.
Okay.
This is something else you can do on Smart Hub. We showed a, a daily graph a minute ago that shows the usage by day. You can actually get down to the hour on your electric meter, this is what that time period shows. You can plot the, the temperature on top of that, but I just wanted to highlight that January the twentieth through the twenty-second, you can see that electricity usage went up and it basically stayed up across those several days in a row, just due to how cold it was. But likewise, if you look back to near the end of Jan, you know, January the eighteenth, you can see the usage goes way down due to the, again, due to the weather. You can also do usage comparisons. You can compare what I use this month versus the same month last year or the previous month. So, again, it's a, it's an indicator of how you kind of performed and if things have changed in your house since the last time. The other thing we're trying to promote, especially for people that, that may not be aware of the higher usage that they're incurring, is the usage alerts. You can set these up with customers, and we can help set them up, that you can set a certain threshold, and once your usage goes above that certain threshold, you're going to receive an email or a text alert with an example there on the right, saying, hey, you know, this particular electric meter, you've used more than that threshold amount, just giving you a heads up. And what it allows people to do is make real-time decisions on their usage as they go forward, instead of being surprised when that bill arrives and fails.
I'm smiling at you, Edward, because I just got a usage notice from my MX bills, and they said, you have done something that's well beyond your normal range.
Right. Same, same for the, and you can set it up for any meter, water or, or electric, so if you're concerned about, you know, a water leak or water usage, you can do the same thing for that. Some of the tools that we, our services we offer customers for energy audits, we have two different options on this, one is a do-it-yourself, that's self-paced, you know, all, both of these are free. You can do the DIY online, or we can provide a handout for you to go through, a paper copy. And when you do that, the customer will receive a ten-dollar Home Depot gift card and a free home energy kit. I should have brought one to show the board, but it includes, you know, some energy-efficient light bulbs, weather stripping caulk, just some different things you can do around your home to make it a little bit more energy efficient. And then if you want to take it a step further, we can actually have somebody come out who's a contractor of TBA, a home energy advisor, and do a full walkthrough of your residence. They're going to look at your insulation, they're going to look at your windows, they're going to look at your doors, they're going to look at your crawl space, if you have a crawl space, and just give you any kind of insight, you'll look at your ductwork, see if there's any kind of leaks, if there's any improvements that you need to make, you'll get a detailed report from that. And then there's an eight-hundred number, because the customer has to be home, or somebody has to be home when that occurs, so you'll need to schedule that. But again, free for customers, a lot of really beneficial information and ways that they can save. Other thing is the energy workshops, we're really promoting those. We got these finalized this week, actually yesterday. They're going to be from April eighth through April the tenth, so about a month away. And you can see we have eight different workshops that are open to the public. We are also doing some individual, going to specific organizations that we coordinated with and speaking with them.
Is that on your website?
We're going to start promoting it, it just was finalized.
Okay, well, Joel, let's get that on ours too, so it'll point to that.
And we're going to put this all on our socials, put a story out, let everybody know and promote it as we get closer as well. Same thing, about sixty minutes. We've been doing this on a regular rhythm in advance of the peak season, so typically do it in the fall and the spring, and have kind of established that rhythm over the last two or three years. And have had a lot of turnout, done, done, I would say, I don't know, we're probably, we've probably done seventy-five of these workshops over the last couple of years. And I think anybody, even if you're an expert and really, really are dialed into your energy usage, I think everybody can learn something from these. Every participant who comes will receive that energy kit. And I have a couple of slides just to show you kind of what that content looks like. The majority of it is just helping customers, it's an educational outreach opportunity. And at the end of the day, it's about a choice that a customer makes. You know, some people don't like to be cold, and so they're going to crank the heat up. You know, we want to be able to provide however much energy that customer wants, but just understand that each choice has a, has a consequence. And so, the, they like to equate eating ground beef versus eating steak. And how that, what does that mean is, when you set your thermostat, for each two degrees that you go up, that's about six percent increase in energy cost. So, according to Department of Energy, they recommend in the winter about sixty-eight setting on your thermostat. Again, that's too cold for some people, you know? They want it to be warmer. But understand that if you make that choice, your energy bill will be higher, and it's the difference between eating a hamburger or eating a filet. This is, I think, always an interesting slide, because the majority of your energy use from customers comes from HVAC. Again, we live in the South, we're weather-dependent, we actually have a double wanding, because we have cold weather in the winter, not a lot, but we also have the really hot, so we're going to, we're going to see that high usage in there. And then, of course, heating water is twenty percent. So, if you add hot water heater and your HVAC, that's seventy-five percent. Everybody wants to talk about their light bill, it's really your heating and cooling bill. So, those are the types of, of content that we try to, try to provide to the customers. And what it, those energy workshops also allow a one-on-one where they can really take a deep dive with experts in the field that are provided to them, and they can, they can try to, try to make those decisions. So, the last thing I want to talk about is just how we're trying to communicate some of the things that we're doing with customers. We are, we are really promoting a how-to-read-your-bill. We're, we're understanding from people that, you know, when they get the bill, they don't understand the difference between a base rate and a variable rate. They don't understand the different services that they're getting from electric versus water versus sewer versus sanitation. So, we have a how-to-read-your-bill flyer that we have available to customers, and we're going to be posting on our website. We also have a video that we just released yesterday, I believe, featuring Samantha, and we'll start.
Hi, I'm Samantha Goza. I'm the Business Services Manager here at Starkey Utilities. The question that we hear the most from customers is how can I keep my utility bill down? It's really tough, right? Especially during the hottest and coldest months of the year. You want to be comfortable, but you don't want to break the bank? That's why we created Smart Hub, is to help customers like you avoid high bill surprises and get the most out of our utility service. Signing up is free and easy, just go to starkeyutilities.com and click on Smart Hub. Once you're registered, all you have to do is select the usage notifications. You can track how much energy you're using, even receive alerts if you're using more than usual. It's real-time information that helps you make the right decisions about your account. At Starkey Utilities, we're giving you the power, and that's a commitment you can count on now and for generations to come.
We're also posting a message on the front of everybody's bill for the next month or so, just letting them know about the high usage that's caused by the colder weather. Again, here's the understanding of your utility bill insert. We're, we're active on all the social media platforms to try to reach customers in that way. And of course, as the mayor mentioned, we're, we're happy to go do community outreach activities to groups and talk more about it as well. So, Mayor, I know we're probably.
Well, we are, let's see if there are any questions. Any, any questions, anybody eventually? I think we're being as proactive as you know how to be, and, and I keep sending, you know, questions to them based on things I'm seeing on Nextdoor, which is a lot of, you know, how can, how can we be? People forget, from a water perspective, that we were dipping our faucets too, and that adds up pretty quickly as well, so all of that comes together with, with the higher bills, so.
Right.
All right, but if there are no questions, thank you, Edward.
Appreciate it.
And we can move into our agenda, which I think is probably going to be fairly simple this time around, so. I know Lisa's pushing to keep, make sure it's simple on April first, but.
You might have to pay it in the last minute.
Kind of be in that way no matter how we slice it. So, we have two sets of minutes, anything about them, they're all, all good and put together?
Excellent.
Can we do consent on those, on those two? Okay. Under, under Mayor's comments, I will remind folks that absentee voting is available, and if anything else comes up, we'll make note of that as well, so. Public hearing, we're going to have one public hearing, and Mr. McCaskey, you're handling, handling this for Mr. Havlon today?
Yes, Frank Jones, basically requesting driveway width variance going from twenty feet to twenty-two feet. The board of adjustment fields managedly evoked to approve it.
Okay, okay, no, I'm sorry, you did say unanimous.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we will be having that public hearing. Then under Mayor's business, we have, we need to do a repeal on this particular article. Basically, what has happened, it was a three-dollar dr, there amount that the judge has now folded into just a fifty-dollar fee that incorporates that as well, and so, this is just a housekeeping maneuver to repeal that. So, if we could get that on consent, that'd be great. All right. And then resolutions authorizing liens, Mr. McCaskey, you manage those too.
Yes, those were just two moans, liens, so it's like free and dollars.
Okay, so, we just need to approve those as a standard, so consent for those?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have Miss Hospitality, Miss Madeline Montgomery, is asking for the full-page ad, and that's what we've been doing over the last decade or so, and I don't think the price has gone up, is that right?
Yes.
All right, we consent that one?
Yes.
Okay. And then airport, Rodney is not here, but he does get to, well, he wants to advertise for bids on that one, it's the next one, I think is kind of cool, but advertising for bids for the runway extension for site work, consent for that one? And the second one is, we just got notice of a hundred percent grant amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars, which we get to accept, and this is for that medevac emergency center at the Jordan M. Bryan Field, so.
I've got a question. I was reading the contract, and it says zero percent of pre-construction costs, which I know we're not going to do that, but it also said that we wouldn't get the funding until a hundred percent of the money was there. Do we have the funding for the whole project already?
No, airport does.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, there you go. Now, but, but there's also another grant that they're seeking.
Yes.
So, we've got the hundred percent on the grant? Okay, I just was checking.
And if worse came to worse, I think we'd probably come up with it on the front end.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, and then the community development, we've got advanced travel, this is the HPC, our new member, right?
Yes, so essentially, each commission member is, is supposed to attend a training by NDah, and this meets the requirement for boot camp, so we say credit.
Okay, all right, consent for that one? Okay. And then we do have our Dox, Startle Doxen Derby coming up, so, and that was a, that's a hugely popular event. I think it incorporates, this is one of those that is a little more expensive than normal, and so I could not sign off on it, but I think it's certainly worth doing in-kind services, so consent for that one?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have the claims docket, approval of the fiscal year budget adjustments, any of those that we need to, are those just basic housekeeping stuff?
Just the basic housekeeping before the end of quarter.
Okay, consent for that one? And then the reimbursing triangle crossing, and this is also basically housekeeping stuff, although, hmm, I will, we'll leave this also all to consent, because I believe that all of them, they might want to vote differently.
This is, this is partially for me to be able to wire that money when it arrives.
Sure, I, I understand, I just want to respect his desire to make statements, so. All right, then, under IT, we've got threat locker security software, anything about that you want to share with us?
Just some software that we identified that we think is very useful, and we've got room in the budget for it, so we'd like to proceed with that.